Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Twenty-fourth February, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Tonight, it's a little different. We're going to have a two-part activity for the Board. The first part will be televised. We have some administrative matters to take care of. And primary purpose, however, would be to get a report from Mr. Dave Prickett of DPC Consulting concerning Colonial Acres and an II issue there that's been lingering for a number of years. To begin, any announcements?
I've got none.
No one's here for public forum. Just a few quick things, then we'll get to Dave. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of thirteen January 2015?
So moved.
Discussion, just one item. No votes are reflected on the first page on obsolete committees. And the second, first paragraph of the second page abolishing various committees. They were unanimous, but the only thing reflected there is seconds. Subject to that change, anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the minutes, Board of Selectmen minutes of twenty-nine January?
So moved.
I'll second. Any changes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. One of the items we're going to talk about tonight is the Emergency Communications Oversight User Agreement. And Bill Belden's here. He'll take, he can take the lead on that. We received a communication from the Hampshire Council of Governments asking us to sign up on this Hampshire County Emergency Communication System Agreement. It concerns operation of a tower in Goshen used for communication primarily for the Hill Towns. And I guess, well, why don't you just walk us through?
Well, it's not just a tower in Goshen. They actually did a build-out out there in Covington, Chesapeake, Plainfield, Worthington area. And so there's actually three towers out there. So what they're asking to do, and they're saying we're secondary.
Sorry. We are secondary users of particularly Goshen Tower, because we wouldn't hit the other towers. I'm almost positive. So there's, it includes West Hampton, Hatfield, and Pella. So what they're proposing is we pay, the six towns that are out there, these are all communities that are dispatched out of the State Police Barracks down North Hampton. So the six communities that it affects out there would be paying a full share, which was $485 per community. And they're asking us to pay one-third share in signing onto this agreement. So I've talked to Chief Norris over in West Hampton, and he and I are both in agreement that, you know, reluctantly, we should sign onto this. Because right now, we, we are, West Hampton and Hatfield are dispatched off of Skinner Mountain. We pay absolutely no utility costs. We pay no maintenance fee, no service fee, anything. And it's all done by the State Police.
Which they also do.
Which they will also do there. But some of this, what they're doing out there is they're, they're looking for money for, for those types of things, you know, utility maintenance costs, generators, they have generators out there, which we do over at Skinner, by the way, too. There's a tower in Goshen that, the tower in Goshen actually, Hampshire County gets, what is it? We get $7,200 a year rent on that. Town in Goshen gets $7,200. The Hampshire County gets $7,200. And that, that money has been historically used for things to, to deal with Hampshire County fire training, that half of the money. And so, that $7,200, $800 goes for insurance for an air truck that we have. And then the rest is going to go to help budget this. They, it's about a $9,300 budget, maintenance budget on that build-out out there. And part of that's being earmarked, out of that budget, is being earmarked for capital items. So if the repeater goes down, they, there's money there to, to, you know, purchase a new one and get everything up and running. So the idea is, if, you know, we get into this agreement, it will also cover us for over at Skinner, if our repeater goes down, that this capital money would also be used to purchase a new repeater for over there, or wherever else it has to be done to get it going on. So they're asking us to sign us an agreement. It's $161.90 a year, I believe, so that we could take out of either the fire or the ambulance budgets, expense accounts. So I'm asking you to sign it tonight with all this information. And I, it's probably a good insurance policy. That's basically what they look at it, so, you know, so.
I think the key point Bill's trying to make is one, or key points that folks should remember, that's not our primary tower, and we're not even using that.
No.
We're using a different tower. But in terms of looking at the broader picture and who the players are, and some of these folks like the State Police are picking up costs that are not being charged to us at Skinner, like maintenance, like electricity.
Right.
He thinks the $160 a year, whatever it is, a nominal sum is, is worth.
It's like an insurance policy.
Worth being partied to.
Yeah. For the rate for the network.
Right.
Certainly seems worth $12 a month or so, when you break it down.
Is there a motion, then, to approve the Hampshire County Emergency Communication System Charter and the user agreement?
There is. So moved.
All right, I'll second. Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. We'll sign that later? Is that, we're going to sign that later, tonight, or tomorrow?
As folks are aware, we've had a little snow of late. And like many communities in the Commonwealth, we've gone through our snow and ice budget to the tune of about $34,000 as of date. Now, under Mass General Law, Chapter 34, Section 31D, we need to authorize the DPW to deficit spend in the snow and ice appropriations. And that's subject to Finance Committee approval as well. And they've already been alerted. We're meeting with them after this session.
Right.
So they take it up there. So is there a motion under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 31D, to authorize deficit spending in the snow and ice appropriations?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Blackboard connect? I'm sorry, we let Bill go a little too quickly here. Apologize. Have you had any discussion on it?
From a school perspective, I mean, my understanding is that the, the emergency side of town has gone to a service called Code Red, which is a way of notifying the public of some sort of circumstance, emergency circumstance, that's happening within the town. The school system, I want to make sure I get this right, wasn't really part of the process to determine the town going to that network. So I don't even know if they could, actually. I don't know, it was just, we were, excuse me, we were informed that the, the town was making this move, and just, you know, wanted to let you know. So we are still using the, the current, the school system is still using the current system until the end of the school year. At that point, they will have to, the school committee will have to decide if they want to continue with some sort of notification system. And if so, the school system would be separate from the town, and would then, would now have to increase their operations budget to, to include that service. So it's a separate system. I would, I would think that the schools would still want to have that service available. You know, not, you know, the snow days and those types of things are always on television, but should something happen during the day, or we need to reach out to parents, both within Hatfield and outside, because we have so many school of choice students, we want to make sure they're able to be reached. So we'll, we'll have that conversation, but it isn't something that was budgeted for at this point, to be in, in the budget that's going to be proposed.
Well, there seems to be a little issue with regard to requirements definition and ignoring the school and.
And, well, I, yeah, I wasn't privy to the conversation. And of course, last week, when, when I was looking into it with school vacation, so I wasn't able to get in with all the players. But my understanding is, it was, you know, the determination was made, the town, emergency systems are going Code Red, and the schools are going to have to make a decision to, to keep some sort of a system or not. But it doesn't seem like the intent was that the schools would be part of the system. And that could be because of the type of system it is. I don't know the particulars, to be perfectly honest.
Well, we've had the other system for some years, and it didn't seem to be an issue. But for this coming fiscal year, it doesn't appear to be a financial issue for the town in that, I understand Code Red came free this year under a grant. So we haven't, and if we spend, I think it's $3,000 a year for the school, that's what town was spending anyway. So for one year, the costs are, there's no change. The costs are low. But is that something our communications folks ought to be looking at? Is there a common system that?
Well, I think the, I think, I think the determination of, of going to this newer system called Code Red in town was the, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was the Emergency Management Committee sort of.
Yes.
Sort of push, are the ones that brought it forward and approved it, so.
Yeah, they started looking at another type of system, because from my understanding is, they were having some problems with Blackboard Connect. People who were signed up in, with the committee thought this message was, the messages were reaching everyone they were supposed to. Apparently, they were not. And there was all kinds of problems, even getting a hold of someone at Blackboard Connect to try and figure out what the problem was. So apparently, all the other towns around here have moved in the same direction, at least most of them, to Code Red. So that's kind of how that decision fell out.
Okay. I will say that, to the best of my knowledge, in the school systems on the Blackboard Connect does not have a problem reaching people on the other end. So I don't know if it's a system glitch, or a programming glitch, or a user glitch. I mean, I don't know. But, and to answer your question about the, the telecommunications being, being overview, I suppose they could look at this, but although I don't know that this is necessarily something they, it's usually more of a, of a user.
Okay.
You know, the town users and, and the bills that are associated with it. But I'm sure they could lend their expertise if anybody had any particular questions about it.
Well, the other, I guess, we were talking about the school, any impact on the school, and we find it's not according to the school. Is there any issue for you?
No.
In using Code Red?
No. There's no issue with me.
So you're able to use it?
I can use it.
Okay.
It's in place now, right?
It's in place.
Both of them are going.
Both systems.
So how about?
The only thing that I don't know if there's like, with Blackboard Connect, there was a.
Or citizens.
Yeah. Like a public comment, you could put something, public announcement out there. You know, not concerning an emergency or anything.
No, of course we want that.
I think that Code Red doesn't allow you to do that.
True emergency, is that kind of it?
I don't know.
Well, we do have public announcements that we do need to put out to the community. Let's come back for a discussion with Bill again.
Okay.
Boarder Chief. Or see what else we need to do.
And I just want to be clear that the Blackboard Connect is in place till the end of the fiscal year? Is that correct?
For the schools.
Okay.
Well, for at least the schools. I don't know.
Because that's very important.
I don't know what the town.
As far as me sitting here.
I don't know the answer to that, then, Phil.
That's very important, in case you do. I mean, with everything that has happened in the school system, I think it's very important that you should be able to pick up the phone and get the message out there if something unforeseen did happen.
Yes. The School Department, in the way they're set up now, there's been no change.
Okay. Well, I just want to make sure that if, it's good till, it has to be.
Yes.
Well, the other part of all this is, what about citizens?
Yeah.
Do they need to do anything? Like, for example, you registered your email address, so you could get notifications via email on Blackboard Connect. Is there any impact on that? How do, how do they communicate? Or convey their desired means of notification? We, I guess there's a number of questions that we have for Bill to come, walk us through and let everyone in town know about. Okay, well, let's come back to that. Appointments? We have a list of appointments there. We are choosing to set up a screening committee to use in this, assisting the Board of Selectmen in selections for the town administrator position and the accountant position. Is there a, a motion to approve the town, proposed Town Administrator Screening Committee Charter that's contained here?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? It's quite simple, simply review candidates and make a recommendation to the Board. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to approve appointment to the Town Administrator Screening Committee, Mr. Joseph LaValle, Lydia Zisch, Francis Gutchen?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the formation of Accountant Screening Committee?
So moved.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the, second. Any discussion on that?
No.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the Accountant Screening Committee Charter as presented? It echoes that of the.
Yep. So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the appointment of Mr. Edwina Palmasano, G. Louis Slish, Sean Berry, to the Accountant Screening Committee?
So moved.
Second. Any other discussion? None. All in favor?
Aye.
We had a vacancy on the Council on Aging due to the appointment of one of the current members to the Finance Committee, when prohibited in our bylaw for members of Finance Committee to serve on other committees. I say that because in this, these prior appointments, we did appoint Sean Berry, and we did appoint Fran Gutchen to two, who are, and both are members of the Finance Committee. But the charter provides for a representative of the Finance Committee, and our bylaw allows for that.
Right.
So that's kind of an exception. So anyway, is there a vote to appoint Ms. Carrie Flaherty to the Council on Aging?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And is there a vote to appoint as a Housing Authority Representative to the Hatfield Housing Plan Advisory Committee, Ms. Donna Paddock?
So moved.
I'll second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's come on up. I think almost as long as I've been on the Board, there's been ups and downs in terms of discussion of, how do we address the inflow and infiltration issues in Colonial Acres? And it has a number of impacts in terms of cost, impact of treating other than sewage at the sewage plant, electricity, parts, eating up capacity, variety of things, as well as the fact that we have a permit that says we need to be taking that out of our system. In any event, Mr. Dave Prickett of DPC Consulting is here tonight to talk about his look at this issue and some recommendations as to a way ahead.
Thank you.
Dave?
So what you've been provided with a copy is of the draft memo that was prepared a few weeks ago, as well as kind of a agenda or an outline of, you know, the, the initial observations. I'll take a few minutes and kind of walk you through, but I certainly welcome questions relative to the project, and need your help to shape this. But Colonial Acres, for those that aren't aware, is a residential subdivision, approximately 50 homes on Primrose Path and Pleasant Few Drive. It was constructed, the majority of the neighborhood was constructed in the 1960s. So it was a different time in the grand scheme of, of water treatment and wastewater and stormwater. And they were often dealt with as, as one entity or one pipe back in those times. So that's kind of to set the table. The goals of this project in Colonial Acres and the challenges with groundwater and II in that neighborhood go back several years. Certainly as long as I've been involved in Hatfield, but I'm told as far back as 30 years that these problems have been tackled, you know, independently on a small scale. But really, what we're trying to do through this project is identify solutions, alternatives to tackle both the stormwater problems that exist in the neighborhood, as well as the II, the infiltration and inflow that enters the sewer system. And that causes compound issues downstream relative to pumping stations, potential backups, power costs, et cetera. And ultimately, can impact your treatment plant, reduce your capacity that you have for, for growth in the community. So it's a, it's a fairly substantial issue, and obviously, the fact that it's been going on for a while means it's not an easy problem to solve. So here goes. The existing sewer that's in the Colonial Acres neighborhood is the deepest pipe. It's below the basement elevations of the homes. So not only does it receive the sewage from the homes, it also receives the, the foundation drains, the water that comes in there around the homes from when they were constructed. That was a common construction practice. It wasn't wrong in the 1960s, but it certainly is challenging in today's environmental stratosphere. We also have limited drainage outlets. You know, if you've been in that neighborhood, you can kind of feel that it's kind of flat, some rolling elevation, but it's not sitting up on a hill that's well-drained. You do have a drainage ditch to the west of the, the subdivision, and you have a swale that runs from west to east, kind of north of the school, to the, to the east side of the subdivision. So that's, that's just kind of telling you what's out there for background. So what do we look at for alternatives? We really rolled up our sleeves with, with Brian and Phil and got creative. We came up with as many alternatives as we could to consider these, these elements. The first one was converting the existing sewer into a storm drain, combined with adding a new pipe, a second pipe, that would act as a pressure sewer. So there are some limited areas in town and in other areas in, in Western Mass that have pumps for sewage. Given some of the soil and groundwater concerns in the neighborhood, that is an alternative to lessen the impacts of construction for any construction projects that you might have seen in the area. These are challenging conditions. High groundwater, poor soils make it not only expensive for excavation, but messy, and also dangerous in some cases for the, for the contractors to try to work in those conditions. The second alternative was similar to the first, converting the existing sewer to a drain, but adding a second pipe as a gravity sewer. So in that case, that second pipe, that gravity sewer would be deeper than the existing pipe, very deep. We're talking about depths of 10 to 15 feet. So that would be a, a challenging construction effort, needless to say. Alternatives three and four, very similar to the first two. We would, we would rehabilitate the existing sewer pipe. You may recall, for those of you that were involved, five years or so ago, there was discussion about lining the existing sewer pipe to take out the infiltration and flow. And while that would have addressed some of the deficiencies within the street, that would have pushed the problem potentially back into the homes, which would have caused the stormwater problem. So it's kind of this balloon that we poke on from different angles, and it just comes out the other side. So coupled with rehabilitating the sewer, under Alternatives three and four, we would look at both a pressure drainage system, where folks would receive a pump. Many of those homes already have sump pumps in their basement, a common term that, that's used to describe a pump in a basement to, to relieve groundwater. And lastly, would be a gravity drainage system. Now, the gravity drainage system under the last alternative is a bit more complicated in that based on the elevations, it would require a stormwater pump station. Fairly rare technology, especially in rural America, but it is nevertheless a valid alternative that we looked at in terms of developing the costs. So ultimately, we have these four alternatives. All four involve two-pipe solutions to solve both the stormwater and the, and the drainage, or stormwater and the sewer. And they range in cost from about $2.3 million to $2.7 million. These are capital costs. These are, I call them rough cost estimates at planning stage, but it starts to benchmark, you know, the, the order of magnitude that would be required to, to address these problems. Some of the considerations, other than costs that factor into potential decisions, you know, include, and it was mentioned in the preface, are there savings associated with removing the II that is currently, you know, now consuming capacity at the treatment plant, costing you money? When that's taken out and redirected, that provides not only opportunities to save annual costs through the wastewater budget, it provides opportunities for you to reallocate the capacity to growth, if the town is so choosing to, to expand the sewers in any direction, whether that be for residential or non-residential growth. Another thing, and we mentioned it briefly, the depth of construction. You know, that ties in not only to cost, but also disruption in the neighborhood. This is a, a very nice neighborhood in Hatfield. It, I believe, was recently paved within the last five years. So that's always a consideration to, to, to construction, is not undoing what's been done recently. But it would, you know, we're talking about pretty serious construction activities that would, over the course of a season, would impact the residents. So that's certainly something that they would need to be educated on regardless of the alternative. Another item is permitting. We're talking about redirecting discharges to an existing drainage swale and an existing stream, a perennial stream likely. Those will require input from the Conservation Commission, likely from Mass DEP, and potentially from the Army Corps of Engineers, depending on the level of thresholds. So those are considerations that need to be considered before any decisions are made. Grant funding opportunities. I think this is one of the things that I want to leave you with today, is that we are pursuing grant opportunities primarily through U.S. Department of Agriculture, the Rural Development Water and Wastewater Project. I know the town has shown interest in that before in past projects. I know there was limited success, but this is truly a project addressing need for an existing development. It's not an economic development project. It really is focused on what RD likes to fund. So we're optimistic that RD could come up with an aggressive grant solution, which would very much change the, the dynamic of the costs that we, that we discussed. Debt recovery considerations. This is something that the, that the Selectmen will need to consider as, as things move forward. Whether a project, the costs for a project are recovered from taxation, whether they're recovered from user fees, from the owners, or a combination of the such. This is a unique project. More often than not, you're extending sewers to a new subdivision, or you're bringing the first pipe to an old area that needs sewer service. This is a, this is a neighborhood that had the sewer service, has a problem that needs to be addressed. So it's unique, and it provides you an opportunity to be creative in, in how you might approach it from a financial perspective. And I'm certain that the, the Board of Finance obviously would get involved in that discussion as well. So the next steps, in terms of where we're at, and certainly any questions you have, I'd love to, to answer them. I'd like you to consider the method by which you'd like to engage the residents in a public informational session, so we could potentially have the residents, or these 50 homeowners, attend an informational session, talk about the project, the alternatives. I'm sure that they can also share with us some of their experiences day to day. You know, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of nervous souls when the snow melts up in that neighborhood come springtime. I welcome any feedback as time goes on on the draft memo, suggestions you have to help show. shape either what's already been identified or other creative solutions to try to address these problems. I mentioned the grant funding application that's ongoing. I think that'll help us significantly, better provide a, a real plan. And then we also are in discussions with DPW and the, and the Treatment Plan staff about trying to get a flow meter in place this spring. There's been reports that flows, you know, that that eight-inch pipe that leaves that neighborhood can run full in the springtime or during extreme events. If we can document that and record it, it'll go a long ways towards identifying the formula for the return on investment. How much flow is coming into your existing system, really what is the benefit of removing that? So that's an open-ended item that we're hoping to address here in the next eight to 10 weeks, depending on Mother Nature. Let's go winter here anytime soon, so. That's the, that's the nickel overview, and if you, if you've had a chance to talk about the project with Phil or thumb through the memo, certainly be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I thought we were going ahead with the flow meter?
We were going ahead with the flow meter.
Yes.
Recently evolved.
Yes.
In the last day.
Yes.
Like this afternoon.
Oh, okay. Do you have any questions, Brian?
I don't. Well, I guess one question I would have is when you, you talked about the grants, the federal grant. Is it for one particular alternative or another that they are more apt to fund? Or is it, you know, when you, in number three, where you gave the different alternatives?
Now, that's a great question. RD's program is termed the Water and Waste Program. So clearly, we want the II solution to be on the front cover of whatever solution we have, but rolling in the drainage aspects of the project are very common. We can't solve the II without addressing the drainage. They go hand in hand. Hatfield has, is positioned well relative to the, to the community's mean household income and, you know, overall population. You kind of are at the, the premier category for both of those. So with RD, you'd be eligible for up to 45% grant, which is the highest that RD would offer for a community like this.
Right.
So there's no guarantees, but all we can do is, you know, throw the spaghetti on the wall and see what sticks.
Thank you.
You got it.
Just a comment, for folks listening, this is an attempt to look at what are alternatives to address everyone's problem, not just the town's problem with the I and I, but recognizing the impact on homeowners and, and the approach we take.
Right.
So it's, it's two-pronged, trying to solve the entire issue. I like your, your next steps, just a caution on timing. I think we need to deal a little more with the, the cost side, and how and when that might work in our capital planning. It was not in our capital plan for this coming year. So that's, the timing of meeting with the residents, we don't want to shape expectations prematurely. We need to get a little more firm handle on.
Understood.
On where the money's coming from and the timing of that, and then associate that session with the, with the residents. But meanwhile, these other things, we're talking about, the flow meters and that, we could press on. One, one other question. Is there a way to decompose any of these options such that we could do part of it and then, or phase it? Or does it all need to, when you, when you take one of these, you have to do the whole thing?
No, it's, it's phaseable. I think it's phaseable from the standpoint that we have two.
I say that only for the dollar flow.
Absolutely.
Cash flow.
You know, there are two stormwater outlets, so I think you would break it up, you know, kind of the, the southern and western half of the neighborhood versus the northern and eastern half of the neighborhood, and you could approach it stepwise, you know, through as, as many as, you know, two to three phases, I would think, would be realistic. The only downside would be just conveying and understanding that you may be dealing with some temporary paving, you know, for more than one winter season. Usually, those aren't issues as long as we communicate them.
Yeah.
The expectation, so.
That might, that might help a lot in terms of.
Yeah. Softening the, you know, and a, and a lot of it'll depend on what the expiration of your, your current debt cycle is. There may be a project that's coming off the books three years out or four years out.
Exactly.
I think the, the nice thing with rural development is you're usually trying to identify their soft commitment a year or two ahead of the capital. So they'll, they'll work with you, and when they give you a commitment, they understand that you need to take that commitment to the residents in order to appropriate funds. They don't expect you to go get 100%, you know, loan financing, and then go back and try to get a grant after that. So there's definitely time to allow the progression.
Any other question? Dave, appreciate it very much.
Opportunity. Yeah, we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Phil? Other things for tonight?
The only thing I have to say is, you know, again, you know, more snow is predicted for the weekend, so it's been one heck of a February, that's all I can say. We've been working hard at it. I know there's been a lot of hours put in, and I, you know, we appreciate what they're all doing, and, you know, the residents are helping out clearing the fire hydrants, as well as some of the sidewalks, so we appreciate that. Hopefully, spring's around the corner.
I just wanted to, and we say it at every meeting, but, you know, the crews doing a great job throughout, throughout the town, and I wanted to also thank you for, before the last storm, getting all the 20-foot icicles that were hanging over the side, over the council on aging entrance and the ramp and everything. I know the COA Director is, was thrilled, as you saw in the email, so I just wanted to thank you and the, and the guys for doing it.
It's scheduled tomorrow again to take them off again.
Yeah.
So along that same line, echo Brian's comments, excellent work. Mentioned I got stopped in Big Y. I thought I was going to hear a complaint. Heard someone talk about how Hatfield was so much better than Northampton and Easthampton. Even my wife came back from shopping trip in Northampton, Talbot's or somewhere, and the clerk there had a grandson on the basketball team here in Hatfield. She's commenting how much better the roads were being taken care of here than Northampton and Easthampton.
Yeah, they look great.
Folks are doing something right. Appreciate that very much. There was one other thing. Oh, we got, got a minute here. Mr. Lavalley, Joe Lavalley, came in with a proposal for the DPW to take on the project of expanding the Main Street Cemetery some 30 feet toward the rear and with some additional Is that in the budget you've got on the table? Do you need to amend your current budget that's?
That is not in the budget.
Okay, well.
So we'll be looking to fund that. We're trying to put some numbers together now to extend the roads, because that's basically the, the most of it, is to put some TRG in them roads down there for the 30 feet, so cost-wise, it's not going to be that much, but it's, right now, it's not fortunate.
Well, how about trying to get that for our next session with the Finance Committee?
I will.
Is that a week from now?
Two weeks, I think.
Two weeks.
The 10th.
Oh, is it? Okay, the 10th. And the park out here is not on there this year? Okay. All right. Paul, do you have some, some items to cover?
The only thing I'd like to bring up, Phil and I met with the engineers and consultants on the Center School demolition project this afternoon, so they had sent me a, a draft schedule there a while back, which I believe I, I shared with you all. So we're still on schedule for that. We're, they are looking to submit the project to the Central Register next Tuesday, and with bid documents ready by the following Friday, not the week, the Friday after next week. So they'll, they'll be in my office, and we're looking at a, having the contractor onsite April 20th. So that schedule still seems to be viable. They also said it's probably gonna, gonna take a good, a good six to eight weeks to take it down and clean it up.
Okay, so we're talking about.
It's a substantial building.
It is. Well-made, unfortunately.
Yeah.
So it'll be about the 20th of April, thereabouts?
That's, that's the plan.
Okay. Anything else?
Nothing else.
Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes this portion of our program. Thank you very much for watching.